While the common council meeting for March to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call roll, please?
Brown.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Hootie.
Here.
Grattan.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Shanks.
Mayor Wayne here.
Here.
Where is our business agenda approval? Is our motion approved? The agenda is printed.
So moved.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Carried. Approved minutes of previous meetings?
So moved.
Motion by Grattan, second by Shanks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approved minutes of intervening meetings?
So moved.
Motion by Schuster?
Second.
Second by Grattan. Any further discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Public hearing, second CDBG, citizen participation, South Main Street, an update on the status of the CDBG project, including overview of project activities completed to date and activities remaining to be completed.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Thielen. I'm a community development specialist with the MSA Professional Services. We are completing the second of two required public hearings for receiving CDBG funds. The first public hearing happened when you prepared the application for the project. So this is the update on it. The city used 253,361 of their remaining CDBG closed funds for the reconstruction of South Main Street from Cross Street to West Kind Street. The construction activities included a new storm sewer, new asphalt pavement, other sidewalk, minor adjustments to the water and sewer utilities. The project was substantially completed last fall. I understand there's a final course, base course of asphalt pavement markings and landscaping that will be completed by the early summer. Pachinsky Construction has been paid $517,249 with a balance of $77,306 left. Today, $227,915 of CDBG closed funds have been requested, leaving a balance of $25,445 that the city will receive once the final closeout documents have been submitted to Department of Administration. There was no residential displacement, and the project seems to be going pretty good. So that is the update. Next, I'll ask the attending council, anyone else who is present, to identify other housing and community development needs and to have general comments on the CDBG program in general.
Anybody wishing to comment? I guess there's no comments.
All right.
Next, we have an update on the status of residential and/or business displacement, relocation assistance activities required as a result of the CDBG project that was provided. I guess you touched upon that, correct?
Say it again.
You gave us the update that there was no displacement of residential or businesses with the relocation.
That's correct.
Okay. And now you just asked about the housing needs identified in our community. Sean, do you want to touch upon any of that?
Um, sure. I mean, we are looking at a possible, I guess if you want to say, housing shortage with some of the expansions that are going on with our current businesses that are within the community. We do have one business that has a potential of almost 150 new positions within the next two to three years. And so we're kind of looking for places to start development or start some multi-use housing in different areas of the city.
Have you considered, how many jobs are potentially going to be created by future expansion?
Uh, we are looking up to probably 150 to 200 within the next two to three years.
The Community Development Block Grant Program has a, has a public facilities for economic development program, which is tied to job communication, up to about $20,000 per job, up to $500,000 total. So that's something to consider.
Can that be used in connection with other CDBG grants?
That would be more of a separate project.
Okay.
Yeah.
The creator of these jobs, the employer that's also looking to possibly kick in for some incentive money for people to construct in Juneau, or if we provide some, at least some housing facility, whether it be multifamily or private individual homes, they're actually considering kicking in some dollars too towards, towards anybody that's interested in that. And last, we have citizens attending the hearing are offered an opportunity to provide input and feedback on the CDBG project activities. Let the record show there is nobody in attendance tonight to comment on that.
Any comments from the council?
The final payout will be done then when the final surfacing is done and all project expenses are turned in?
That's correct.
Does that include the landscaping that's not completed?
That's correct.
Okay. Also includes any broken concrete that shouldn't be broken already?
That, yeah, that, I, that might be a warranty issue, but CDBG is not going to be too worried about that. So in terms of the funding, that's not going to count against you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Overall, I think it went well. I think we certainly explore another opportunity if the need arises.
Yep. You got the other one coming up here pretty soon, too.
Right. Certainly is a help with the cost of the construction of these projects today. So, yeah.
Absolutely.
We'd like to thank MSA for their fine work and getting it all done for us, as well as the engineering of the project. I think that went well. The supervision of the project, I think, went well. We ran into one little hiccup with drainage at the end. It cost a few extra dollars to maintain that, but we, we had a cooperative neighbor that went halves with that project as far as stormwater drainage and gave us an opportunity to expand upon that project as well. So I think we're in pretty good shape in regards as far as water, stormwater management at least. Mike, you have anything you want to report? We have Mike Lau with us here tonight, too.
Well, the only comment I would make was on Cheryl's comment. The final payout will be made when we accept all the improvements. And as part of the acceptance of all the improvements, we would ask that the contractor take care of any of those issues where there's broken concrete or whatever else there is. So that would be part of the project closeout.
Any other comments from the group? Appreciate you being present with us here tonight.
Yep. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments? I think we've got a street that we can be proud of. I think it all went well. Had a couple hiccups along the way with at least one citizen, but I guess we'll get through it. Okay, next we have communications. We have Justin from RW Baird, presentation for a $2 million funding.
Good evening, everyone. This is really a follow-up, so I'll keep this pretty brief tonight. This is a follow-up to the finance committee meeting we had last week where we went through the potential financing for the 2021 and 2022 capital projects. So Sean, did you send my presentation to the council?
Yes, it's all in there.
Okay, so you all got that. So I'll just, I'll keep this real brief tonight, but when you look at that, on page two, that's really where I want to start. The estimated size borrowing structure of this financing. So this is going to be for $2 million. When we first looked at this project, you know, we were talking about potentially a $1,750,000 project. It's now at $2 million because, you know, interest rates are extremely low right now. We want to take advantage of that low interest rate environment, be able to fund the projects that you need for your, you know, your community to continue improvement and so forth. So these are going to be general obligation promissory notes. This is going to be the most secure investment a potential bond purchaser could buy. General obligation meaning unlimited tax levy by the community. So you're thinking strong security, which gets you that low interest rate. This is going to fund the 2021, 2022 capital improvement projects, such as road improvements and capital equipment over the next several years. And it'll be a 10-year financing, being maturing March 1 of 2022 to 2031. First interest payment will be March 1 of 2022. It'll be callable on March 1 of 2028 or any date thereafter. And again, the estimated interest rate is 1.75 percent. Timeline, we discuss this at finance on March 2. Tonight, you'll have the opportunity to approve the initial resolution, which will kind of kick off the process. We've already kind of started the internal process with putting together the offering document that's going to be sent out to potential purchasers and so forth. So that'll take place over the next month. That's going to be, you know, Sean's going to be involved, heavily involved in that process. Then I'll come back on April 13 and present the final bond sale results. And then the closing would occur on May 4 of 2021. So that's when you'll receive the money and you can start paying those invoices for future projects. So looking at page three, this is more of a detailed plan of finance. This shows on the left side of the page, the existing levy-supported debt service. It layers in the $2 million borrowing. And then on the right side, it shows a hypothetical future issues of approximately $500,000 every other year. So we, we really did that forward planning. Now, it may not be $500,000 in the future. It could be, you know, zero. It could be slightly more. But at least this gave you, the council and finance committee, a good indication of what things may look like into the future if you continue to, you know, borrow for necessary improvements. Then going to page four of the presentation, you can see that that really is more of a comfort page. So what we did here is we showed you, here's your outstanding existing debt. Here's what it looks like after you take on the $2 million borrowing. And then here's what it looks like if you were to do those future capital borrowings for about $500,000 every other year. So the main thing here is municipalities can borrow up to 5% of your equalized valuation. The valuation for the city is about $122 million, so just about $6 million in available capacity. When you're all said and done, after this, this 2021 borrowing, there's going to be about $2.4 million remaining in available capacity in, in the event that something unexpected occurs. You have that ability to, to be able to borrow. So it gives you a lot, a lot of comfort, knowing that you're able to do all these necessary improvements, and you still have the ability to, to fund, you know, additional projects if something came up unexpectedly.
Any questions?
I just want to say from a finance side that as far as the budget was approved for the 1.7 million, the reason that we are coming back to council and saying 2 million is because of the interest rate, not right now, knowing what projects that we need to fund, looking ahead and saying, okay, rather than borrowing next year when the interest rates may be much higher, does it make sense to borrow more this year to pull in some of our projects from next year or things that we need? And it was the belief of the finance committee that this made more sense to borrow at potentially 1.75 percent. It could be less. We'd be extremely happy if it would, but nonetheless, with interest rates being what they are, so it's coming back to council at 2 million rather than what was approved at the budget. And so we will be, would be changing that dynamic if we go ahead with this this evening.
Okay, well said. I guess I kind of instigated it. I'm, I'm very concerned about, we have two very ambitious street projects coming up that we'd like to go one year after another on. And I just feel that some of our street resurfacing needs to be kept on the front burner. And I just wanted to have adequate funds so that we could give good driving surfaces for our citizens, that we don't have, have to keep putting them off to the point where, you know, we've got, oh, we've got more hot mix or coal patch in the streets than, than asphalt driving surfaces. So I think it's a good time to expand our borrowing. And like Cheryl said, with the interest rates being where they are, I only see, forecast them to go up. So I'm thinking this is a good move for the city. Any other comments? Anything more from you?
No. I'll be back in a month. Hopefully some really good results.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
We don't have to take any official action on that, Sean?
We do on the finance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't read that far again. Okay. Next, we have approved payments of bills, checks for $956,121.93. Vouchers for $80,845.10. Electronic transfers for $402,596.70. Is there a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Hootie, second by Shanks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Hootie.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Schuster.
Payment of bills have been approved. Next, we have public appearances and citizens' comments regarding agenda items. Let the record show, there is nobody here to speak. Next, we have reports of officials. Mayor, Resolution 77, 2020, authorized representative to file applications for financial assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. Would you like to read that, Cheryl?
Sure. Whereas is the desire of the City of Juneau, Wisconsin, a municipal corporation, to file several applications for state financial assistance for its city and utility facilities under the Wisconsin Environment Improvement Fund, subsection 3, 281.58, 281.59, 281.60, and 281.61 of Wisconsin state statutes. Whereas it is necessary to designate a representative for filing said applications. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the City of Juneau hereby appoints the clerk treasurer as the authorized representative for the City of Juneau for the purpose of filing these applications, and that the representative is further authorized and empowered to do all things necessary in connection with said applications, passed by the common council of the City of Juneau this ninth day of March 2021, and move for passage of Resolution 77, 2020.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion?
I can explain a little if you like.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
So this is, this is more in particular right now, this is for some private lateral replacement funds that we are looking to work with the Department of Administration, Department of Revenue with. This would be in connection with our Highland Street projects, which would occur this summer. We are planning on having a kind of a community meeting in regards to the project, in regards to this lateral service replacement. It is the responsibility of the homeowner to replace the section from the curbside or where they turn off the water at the street to your house. That is the responsibility of the households. So this grant would help refund that money that you would be spending to remove your lead service line and replace it with new service line.
That's much cheaper and better to do it done.
Yes. During, yep, during the construction, correct. And again, more information to come once we get more information in regards to the complete construction project. But right now, we're probably looking at a 30-day window roughly during this road construction, where these laterals could be replaced for the best, at the best, at the ultimate time during that construction.
In the meantime, we are going to have to create an ordinance to require this.
Not with this grant.
Oh, not with this grant?
Not with this grant. They highly recommend it, and there is, there is money to help set up that ordinance, but it is not required to receive this grant.
Okay. But we should create an ordinance, requiring this to be done, so that we don't have people just saying, eh, it works. I don't need to do that. So that will have to be done in the future here, in the very near future.
Yeah, I'll just wait on that. You'll definitely need an ordinance. So if you need any edits to it, I can help.
Appreciate that, Andrew. Feel free to chime in anytime.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Seeing none? Move on. Clerk Treasurer, you have a report? I don't have anything else under the mayor's.
Um, we need a roll call vote on this.
We got a vote on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion, a second?
Yes, we do.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Hootie.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Resolution 77, 2020 has passed. I have nothing more. Clerk?
Um, our audit is complete for the city. I believe the utility portion just wrapped up within the last day or so, I believe. We still are on the path of Baker Tilly presenting the financials at our May council meeting. Hopefully, we can bring some of that information to finance prior to our May council meeting. Other than that, we do have an election, which was April 6. We do have three aldermen that are running unopposed, but we still encourage everybody to get out and vote.
Any questions for our clerk? Moving on to written reports, we have building permit report. We have Police Department, Juneau Fire and Rescue, and EMS. There are no reports there. Any questions on the building permit report? Moving on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. Library report, you're next.
Okay, four quick things I would like to highlight this month. I would like to verbally thank Rita Lamp, one of your local Juneau residents, who has a gift and talent for doing seamstress work. And she created a cover for our video projector and donated her time and talent. And so I just wanted to acknowledge her by name. And we have so many talented people in our community. And I'm not one of those that can do that. So thank you, Rita. Number two, the Friends of the Juneau Public Library is a nonprofit organization that pours their fundraising efforts back into the library. And they will be having a brot fry fundraiser at Glenn's Market in Watertown on April 9. That's a Friday. And we will be doing brot fries locally as well this summer with Yankee's Piggly Wiggly. But if you've ever been to Glenn's Market in Watertown, you know they have a strong following and some pretty amazing brats. And so mark that on your calendar, April 9. And that's from 10 until 3. And all the profits from that fundraiser then benefit the Friends, which ultimately benefits your local library. Behind me here, let me turn it on. It lights up. We purchased this for some fun summer reading prize distribution. Last year, with everything virtual, usually you got your little treasure box and the kids dig in it and find what they want. Well, we wanted to create an atmosphere where there wasn't a lot of touching and contamination in that regard. So we'll be distributing prizes this way, this summer, but next week, because St. Patty's Day, the luck of the Irish, you're going to be able to test out all next week, your luck on winning one of four prizes. There's four slots, and we might have a couple guys demo. But when you check out three books, if you are a child ages zero to age 12, you may get a Plinko chip that has been sanitized right before you touch it, and drop it in the Plinko board. Mr. Mayor, would you show me how that goes? If you've ever watched Price is Right, you know this. So drop it. A million dollars. There you go. Actually, our prize...
Taking small bills.
Oh, like that other time. Right. Okay. So we have a Keurig machine that we don't have out to the public right now, but one of these slots will be a beverage of your choice that you win, and we'll make it on the spot for you. Another prize is a Subway cookie. And so we like to pour community dollars back into the community and support that local business. Another potential prize is a ticket to put in our Lucky Book drawing. We have books all related to luck or with luck in the title, and that's what you get. You get a ticket for a free book. There you go. And then last but not least, we do have a pot of gold prize that you could earn if you were in the green slot to win our lucky pot of gold, i.e. chocolate. So anyway, come on in next week, March 15 through the 19, and check out some books and just have fun winning some prizes and testing out your luck. And then last but not least, the council has a handout that I gave you. And it's interesting. This is all Monarch Library System related. One side is 2019 numbers, one is 2020 numbers. Not everything is apples to apples, because 2020 was a year with a pandemic. But some numbers show you the drastic differences between circulation. For example, that top circle, if you look at 2019, 3,683,000 physical checkouts of materials throughout our four county library system. Flip it over to 2020, 2,386,000. So a severe drop in physical material checkout. However, look on the left and right of that circle. If you look at 19, it tells you digital circulation, your eBooks or your e-audio books. And you can see how in the year of a pandemic, our digital materials, that increased substantially. And that was amazing because we were actually physically closed half of March, all of April, and all of May. So people were still looking for those essential services libraries provide, even when our doors were closed. Some other things I'd like to highlight on 2020, there's another orange circle, 65,630 take and make crafts. We didn't get to sit with our adults and our children and do programs face to face, but we made kits and sent them home and said, put these together in the safety and security of your own home. of your own home. And if you look in that light blue, all around there, that circle, all the ways we responded to this pandemic, virtual trivia, virtual story times, recipe clubs, tutorial videos, sidewalk chalk, book talks, your Juno Public Library did several of those things listed there. So we thank you, the City of Juno, for not only participating and using these ways that we tried to provide you services, but also you, the city, for continuing to fund us in a way that we can creatively reach our public during a pandemic. So like, all the numbers aren't the same things being compared, but I just wanted you to see the impact system-wide in comparing those two years. Any questions? All right. John, you should talk.
We should try it.
Let's see, the million dollars is blue now.
It's over there.
Yeah. Well, you're not getting it. All right. Pot of gold. There you go.
Thank you, Jeanette.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Plan Commission, David.
It's hard to follow her. We had Dodge &amp; School came and presented the final pictures of their new building and of all the things that they're going to redo at the Dodge &amp; School. And we approved the, they came to us because of, they needed approval of the new building that was going to be built on the west side of the, of the building. And we, we approved it. It's, it's going to be a great help for the future. It's going to help the students jump into potential learning jobs before they end up at VOTech to do the final polish. We also discussed and approved an ordinance for changing for public hearing notice, which I have to read on that. We also discussed outdoor dining ordinance. We discussed more the concept of it. The public safety is going to have to come up with the verbiage for outdoor dining because of, of what they're eating and drinking out, out there. But Blue Zone is the one helping downtown advise the city on this, and we're working towards hopefully having that pass. Then we discussed maintenance issues around town. That was it. I got to get to our... Ordinance to amend Chapter 17.04.320, City of Juno ordinances for public hearing notice. The common counsel of the City of Juno ordains Section 17.04.320 zoning public hearing notice is hereby amended to change. From, which is the present, none of any, notice of any public hearing which the city council, plant commission, or Board of Appeals is required to hold under the terms of its title shall specify the date, time, and place of the hearing and shall state the matter to be considered. The notice shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation at least once each week for two consecutive weeks, and the hearing shall not be held until at least seven days following the date of the last publication. The city clerk shall also give at least 10 days prior written notice to the city clerk of any municipality within 1,000 feet of any land to be affected by the proposed action. The change will be to notice of any, notice of any public hearing which the city council, plant commission, or Board of Appeals is required to hold under the terms of this title shall specify the date, time, and place of the hearing and shall state the matter to be considered. The notice shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation at least once each week for two consecutive weeks, and the hearing shall not be held until at least seven days following the date of the last publication. The city clerk shall also give at least 10 days prior written notice to the clerk of any municipality within 1,000 feet of any land to be affected by the proposed action and all property owners within a 500-foot radius. First reading, March 9th, 2021.
Any questions on the ordinance amendment?
What caused the change?
What? It was the 500-foot radius that was needed at the bottom. Two of the neighbors were wrong.
But what spurred the change? The state, state statute doesn't states who we should send notices to, if they leave it up to the city ordinances. So throwing it in an ordinance, it stays consistent. Right now, there was really, with new people coming in, there was really no direction of who should be, should be just the neighbors right next to the property being affected, should be 12 neighbors to each side. So this is establishing basically a standard on who gets notified on the changes. Okay, so there's no event happened that spurred this change? Correct. Right, yep. Just cleaning it up. Correct.
Any other questions? Anything else to report tonight, Dee?
Nope.
Finance Committee, Cheryl.
We did meet. We had Justin come and present to us, as we present, as he presented to you. We did throw him a curve, and we said, by the way, let's change it to $2 million, and he has been gracious to figure that out for us. Again, this is, this is something that was approved in our budget for the $1,750,000, but we are asking the council as a whole to look at this as a opportunity to better the city, take care of projects both for this year and for next year. One of the stipulations that we did make at finance in bringing this to you folks is that there will be a list of projects, and those will be what that money is for, so it's not, well, you know, we already need this, oh, now we need that, now we need that. The objective is, if we're going to do this, we need to have a direction and know exactly what we're doing with it. That plan has not been formalized yet as far as the projects, but it will be. That was one of our issues. We also took in approving 2020 budget amendments. Sean has gone through our budget from 2020, and although the 2020 year is complete, there are some changes that need to be made of where monies were actually spent, where they had been placed in particular accounts, where needed to be moved to the correct account where they should have been noted, and those were, what those changes were made there. We looked at the COVID-19 federal aid proposal and the option that we have for that. There will be more information coming with that. Right now, there's no actionable items on that one. We talked about the bar agreement with Jason White Catering. That will also be coming back to finance with some further information. Needed to share some information with Jason in regards to where we are with that right now as well. We did talk about the, we just made the resolution in regards to the private sewer lateral, private service lateral replacements, giving Sean authority to take care of those so that we can move on for our people here. Being that, part of the reason for this is the DNR is requiring that we change our phosphorus levels in our lead levels and the corrosiveness levels of our water. And part of that is everything goes down to our wastewater treatment plant. So if it's coming into your house and coming right back out through those pipes, we have issues. We're, we're not going to meet some of those requirements. So unfortunately, the requirements for much of this is being dictated and mandated by our state DNR. So this service lateral that we're talking about making an ordinance that'll be required is not because we think, oh, everybody should not have lead because we don't like lead. It's coming from the DNR that it's been proven lead is, is dangerous to us, it's harmful, and so we want to make sure that those are corrected and then we can treat the water correctly out of the sewer plant for us. We did talk about the new cooler for the community center in the bar room. We've been having some issues with that. I believe it's 23 years old. At some point in time, equipment fails. So I do have some resolutions to read, our first one being Resolution 78, 2020, in regards to the $2 million general obligation promissory notes. Resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2 million general obligation promissory notes. Whereas the City of Juno Dodge County, Wisconsin, the city is presently in need of approximately $2 million for public purposes, including street improvement projects and other capital improvements and acquisitions, and whereas it is desirable to borrow said funds to the issuance of general obligation promissory notes pursuant to Section 67.12, print 12, Wisconsin statutes. Now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel of the city that Section 1, the notes, the city shall issue to general obligation promissory notes, the notes, in an amount of approximately $2 million for the purposes above specified. Section 2, sale of notes, the common counsel hereby authorizes and directs that the notes be offered for public sale. At a subsequent meeting, the common counsel shall consider such bids for the notes as may have been received and take action thereon. Section 3, notice of sale. The city clerk in consultation with Robert W. Baird and Company Incorporated, Baird, B. and hereby, is directed to cause notice of the sale of the notes to be disseminated in such manner and at such times as the city clerk may determine, and to cause copies of a complete official statement and other pertinent data to be forwarded to interested bidders as the city clerk may determine. Section 4, official statement. The city clerk in consultation with Baird shall cause an official statement concerning this issue to be prepared by Baird. The appropriate city officials to determine when the official statement is final for purposes of Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15(c)(12), and shall certify with official statement such certification to constitute full authorization of such official statement under this resolution adopted and approved and recorded March 9th, 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 78, 2020.
Motion by Brown, second by Shanks. Any further discussion? I think we covered it all pretty well on Justin's presentations. No other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Granton.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 78, 2020 has passed.
Sean, before I read this next resolution, is there anything you would like to add in regards to the 2020 budget amendments?
Um, this is, it's cleaning up kind of more of where we appropriated our funds in the beginning of the year. So when we issue our financial statements in the back of the notes, which I'm sure everybody reads, it states what budget, what departments, what funds were over or under, or were under budget, or I'm sorry, over budget throughout the year. This just kind of cleans that up. State statutes does allow city councils to move that money around, as long as we get a two-thirds vote. There was no change to the tax levy, no change to how the funds in total were spent, but it's just kind of cleaning up that financial statement.
Resolution 79, 2020, approve 2020 budget amendments. Whereas the finance committee has reviewed the 2020 budget amendments, and whereas pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 65.90, print 5, print A, the city council of Juno is permitted to approve budget amendments to its adopted budget, and whereas the taxes levied for the uses and purposes set forth in the 2020 budget are amended as listed in Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that the common counsel of the City of Juno accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common counsel of the City of Juno this ninth day of March 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 79, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Granton. Further discussion? See none? Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Granton.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Resolution 79, 2020 has passed.
Resolution 80, 2020, approve purchase of new cooler for community center. Whereas the public works and finance committee have both reviewed the need to purchase a new cooler for the community center. Whereas the public works and finance committee recommend to approve the quote from Call Refrigeration in the amount not to exceed $3,100 as shown in Exhibit A using community center funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the common counsel of the City of Juno accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common counsel of the City of Juno this ninth day of March 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 80, 2020. Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Further discussion? This is, as Cheryl said, an aging cooler that has failed. It's an under-bar cooler, so it's a chest type where you reach in. I don't know if that's what we're replacing it with.
It, the quote, that's-
Says the same.
It's the exact same one.
Looking at the clerk there, he's nodding his head. And revised quote was for $3,000, correct?
Well, then the attachment says the price is $3,119.
If you go up from that one, there's a new- So the revised quote was for $3,100, which we're passing on this resolution.
Yeah, that says this is the same coolers you have now.
Well, that's a 24 years. But you bought parts. Yeah, I spoke with Jason Lights, who is currently running the bar down at the community center. He is, he would prefer that we replaced it with this chest style refrigerator instead of a door style. Correct.
He's had to re-energize the cooling system several times the last few years, so it's been getting worse, and now it's finally done.
Now we'll have to de-energize the cooling system to get it out of there and get rid of that, right?
I think it's called recharge. Okay, any other questions? See none? Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Granton.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Resolution 80, 2020 has passed.
Resolution 81, 2020 is coming to us this evening as a full council. This did not come through finance itself. Dodge County had asked us last year to help with a project on West Street, and we had said, yes, we would. Didn't end up happening, and so they've come back to us this year and said, hey, we want to do West Street, will you help us? And so this is being brought to us now, being asked from Dodge County itself, and so we as a commission as a whole get to make this determination. Resolution 81, 2020, approve West Street, West Street resurfacing. Whereas Dodge County has bid the resurfacing of West Street from the dead end to Center Street and Center Street from West Street to Highway 26 as part of their Justice Building parking lot bid. And whereas bids were received from Carte, Carte and Sher Brothers and Northeast Asphalt as shown in Exhibit A, and whereas Dodge County has scheduled to approve accepting the bid for Northeast Asphalt at their County Board of Supervisors' March meeting, and the city also agrees to accepting the Northeast Asphalt bid. Whereas the cost of the resurfacing shall not exceed $45,000 and shall be paid with funds from the 2021 borrowing. Now therefore be it resolved that the common counsel of the City of Juno accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common counsel of the City of Juno this ninth day of March 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 81, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Shanks. Questions? What happened to the money we had earmarked from last year when the project didn't, for taking the cost of the resurfacing from the 2021 borrowing? What happened to the money that we had budgeted last year for this?
Those funds are never transferred from general fund, fund balance. We can take it from fund balance, but it was included in this year's budget for borrowing.
And you remember what last year's cost was?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
I thought this was just about double, isn't it?
I believe so. I believe we were expecting some kind of assistance from Dodge County at that point last year.
Okay.
And I have not heard anything in regards to assistance from them.
Well, we are, we are extending it up the hill to Highway 26, but I didn't think that we would be looking at quite these kind of dollars. And I, I guess I lost track to why were they assisting us last year and not assisting us this year on this?
That I am not sure on.
That I am not sure on. Mike, do you remember at all? No, I certainly wasn't involved in that.
No, he wasn't. Dodge County did all the front, they had in work. And I thought they, I thought they only had a number of like $19,000 to $21,000, I thought, but anyway, um, yeah. Kind of confused, um, much. This was, this was a lot more than what I expected.
And we had budgeted, I believe, $51,000 in this year's budget for it. So I'm assuming that's probably what the original was last year.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, second. Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schenks.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Foodie.
Aye.
Grun.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
I would ask the clerk to research that though, to find out what the, what the reasoning was that we were having assistance last year from them. They instigated, or they, they requested this project. It wasn't on our, our top priority list of street projects by any means. There was a lot of, a lot of patching and trench work that was done by the county going from their justice facility to the Sheriff's Department that caused a lot of the street break up there and what have you. But it certainly wasn't on, on the top of Juneau's list as far as street projects to do it. It was a matter of coordinating with their blacktopping project for their parking lot, just being a good neighbor. I just don't recall the dollar amounts. I probably got it if I dig into my old files someplace or whatever, but I, it's considerably more than this.
Yeah, that chunk of Center Street's getting pretty bad by the stop sign off.
No, it's a good time to do it. I mean, I just don't agree with that. I just wasn't expecting this kind of...
Were there even sinkholes there?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of black patch in there. That's why at the end of last season, I talked to Scott about expanding that project and going up the hill since we were doing the, doing it down to the end of West Street to the intersection, so.
So in our five-year plan that was passed last year, it was estimating a cost of $57,000. But I can, I know there was, I know we had discussed something in regards to county paintards. I can reach out and see what's up.
Okay. Resolution 81-2020 has passed.
The next one is for our Highland Street, East Oak Street reconstruction project. Um, MSA is, um, who we're working with in regards to, um, the engineering, the design, the building, the overseeing, the, making sure that things are done correctly and as required because these are being worked with CDBG funds. And there is a cost that comes with that, and we must approve that cost if we wish to have them do that service for us. As our city clerk treasurer doesn't have that kind of time or some of those skills, so. Resolution 82-2020, approve agreement with MSA, Highland Street, East Oak Street reconstruction. Whereas the common council has reviewed the agreement with MSA to provide the engineering design, bidding-related services, construction administration services, and construction observation services for reconstruction of Highland Street and East Oak Street. Reconstruction of the existing street to include new storm sewer, water mainline, curb, gutter, sidewalk, driveway aprons, street pavement, and all related work. And whereas the common council recommends approving the agreement with MSA for $132,610 in professional services as shown in Exhibit A. And now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the City of Juneau this ninth day of March, 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 82-2020. Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Foodie. Questions? Michael, are these services pretty well equally split between Highland and Oak? Or is there more work to be done, one or the other?
This particular contract relates specifically to the Highland Street from East Center to, um, East Oak Grove Street and only the portion of Oak Street, um, East Oak Street from Depot Street to Highland Street. Although included in here, we need to position ourselves because this is the downstream end of the rest of East Oak Street, the dead end section. We need to figure out what the size of the pipes would be for storm sewer extensions and set ourselves up for that project for next year. So there is some work related to the rest of East Oak, although most of it is for just that small chunk of East Oak Street.
Just to refresh your, your memory, um, west of Highland Street down to Depot Street does not have any underground utilities other than the storm sewer. So we don't have water and sewer included in that.
That's correct.
Any questions?
This is a fixed price, correct, regardless of hours and...
The majority of it is. The only thing that is by time and materials is the construction observation part of it. And again, we've made an estimate based upon other projects of similar nature, uh, where that time and materials part of it. And if it comes in like the South Main Street, will actually be less than what we had in there for an estimate there on that particular part of it.
Any other questions for Michael? I don't know, we got him up on his feet here.
Recamera the sewer pipes before the streets blacktop? Does that still happen?
Yes, yes, that is part of the contractor's responsibility. In addition to that, we can pressure test the water. They chlorinate the water. We test that with, for bacteria. And just a physical inspection basically of the storm sewer. We don't typically televise that, but we inspect all of the inlets and the manholes. So that's kind of a compliance testing of all of the underground utilities.
Any other questions?
I guess just one question about the storm. Are we going to be straining that main transmission line of stormwater down along High and Sensient down to our ditch? Are we going to be taxing this even more naturally with speeding up, um, the movement of water because it's going to be hard pipe rather than drifting across road surface?
Yeah, it'll be speeding it up. Um, that's probably part of our design effort is to try to figure that capacity out. There may have to, at some point maybe in the future, be some upgrades to the downstream end of that. We do already have a double pipe underneath East Oak Street from the project back in the 90s. We expected that there was going to be increased stormwater coming down that main channel. Basically, that's the main channel coming out of town, serving a lot of the, uh, storm sewer needs. So we put in a double pipe there, two 48-inch diameter pipes, although we're only using one 48-inch diameter right now because we need to extend south and north from there. So I have something that we'll kind of investigate and it'll be seen, I guess, um, how critical that upgrade's going to be.
Are the hoses going to be offered the chance to tie their sump pumps directly into the storm sewer?
I would hope so, yes.
Very few hoses along that road have sump pumps, dials. In fact, I would almost virtually say, say there's only about one I, I know of on Highland Street that has a floor drainage system or a tile system and some pump. The rest of them are all...
I think the big, the big effort there should be on the next section of East Oak Street, um, trying to get some of those tied in. We do have some flooding issues in some of the backyards there on the south side of the street. So any of that water that could be redirected from the back towards the front into the pipe would be good, although I would hope that we would put a field drain back in some of those backyards in order to, to help that drainage situation. Right now, there is no storm sewer that goes up that dead end street. It all comes down by the curb and gutter, uh, down to the intersection. So once we get storm sewer pipe up there, we can then venture into the backyards if we want to, to try to put in a field inlet.
Building on that, there is a resident down there that's been routinely renting a, a city or utility-owned trash pump to suck out his backyard every year to the town, $200 to $500 each season to get that water moved. So I think we have an obligation at this time to address that need and hopefully, like Mike said, reduce the, the need for him to have to do that, that it flow naturally or with the assistance of a smaller privately-owned pump that he wouldn't have to, you know, go to the resorts of paying those kind of dollars for the rental of a, of a trash pump from the utilities.
There also is a possibility of a future extension of East Oak Street further to the east. There's a big field back there that essentially this street could be extended even further. So the storm sewer would have to take that into consideration as well as far as sizing. And, and the other issue that I'll mention again, I've mentioned it many times, is that particular project for next year is going to be a construction, I don't want, I don't want to call it a nightmare, but it's going to be a construction issue to get the people in and out of that street just because it's so narrow. We need to do something, at least on a temporary basis, I think at the dead end, to try to get people out of Center Street so that they've got two ways to go during construction. Otherwise, there's going to be major issues trying to get people in and out of there that live there.
And with the narrow frontage of their lots, we're going to have to offer them some off-street parking, even if they got to walk half a block either direction. I mean, the Co-op property is probably a prime candidate for the ones at the west end, but you go all the way down the east end, that's a pretty good hike to get from the east end to Oak all the way down to the Co-op. But I mean, the first, the immediate properties right off of Highland could probably utilize the Co-op properties. So we'll have to make arrangements or something with them as well, so.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Do you want to take a roll call vote on you? Roll call vote, please, unless there's other questions or comments.
Brown.
Aye.
Foodie.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Grun.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Schenks.
Aye.
Resolution 82-2020 has passed.
I have nothing else from Finance.
Okay, next we have personnel.
We did not meet.
Any questions for personnel? Let you off the hook. Public Safety, John.
Uh, we did not meet either, but I do have run Resolution to read the EMS officers. Resolution 83-2020, approve appointment of EMS officers. Whereas Emergency Medical Service EMS has a general election for EMS offices. The following officers will be named office without term beginning in February 2021. Kimberly Montgomery, Assistant Coordinator, two years. Nathan Zank, Training Officer, two years. Whereas EMS bylaws require the common council of the City of June to confirm EMS elections. Now therefore be resolved that the common council of the City of June accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the City of June this ninth day of March, 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 83-2020.
Second.
Motion by Schuster, second by Brown. Now, just a point of reference, this is not required. The only, the only two officers that are required to, to be council-approved would be the EMS coordinator and the fire chief. This is just a courtesy to let us know who's serving in these capacities.
Correct.
Jane, you probably remember.
I think we all stood approved by anyways.
Yeah, it was just, but generally it was always listed when, when those heads were, when the fire chief was, was appointed and approved by the council with the, then they'd always list the tail end.
We would confirm their election results.
Andrew, are you familiar in other communities? I, I'm going by memory on this. I think the only two that are, that are required by law are the EMS coordinator and the fire chief. Fire chief is actually bonded.
That's correct. It's just the EMS coordinator and the fire chief, that's it.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
You're correct.
So this is a courtesy, let that the common council know, but it doesn't necessarily have to go through a resolution, correct?
Does, right. You have, it doesn't hurt to have a resolution, but you didn't need to.
Okay. Well, there's a motion second on the floor, roll call vote.
Well, just before we do that, I think we all stood this too as, um, information when we updated our list though too. It was good to have it documented. I think that was another reason for doing it.
Schuster.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Foodie.
Aye.
Grun.
Aye.
Schenks.
Aye.
Resolution 83-2020 has passed. Anything else from Public?
Moving on from Public Safety.
Moving on, Public Works.
Yeah, we did meet, um, last month, the, we, the council had, had several questions for Scott of purchases that were made. A lot of the purchases were, uh, such as the weed spray and that was, it's purchased for all year. It's just a bulk purchase at the end of the year when the price is cheaper, they're on, and they're on sale. And so you buy that there, uh, the cabinets. We talked to him about that and, um, I mean, he was able to explain all of them. There were legit reasons that it was done. It, it just didn't look real good, so we talked about that.
He essentially bought one, it wasn't big enough, bought a second one, it wasn't big enough, bought a third one. That's, he found use for everything. It wasn't like he bought three cabinets and didn't use the first two that he bought. They just, and Dave did go down and inspect what he had there and thought that it was a good use of space, I guess, Dave. I didn't see him first.
Compared to the wooden cabinets, if you've ever were down there, the wooden cabinets were helped their scale their size. Everything fits in little boxes and trays. It's neatly organized. You go open up the cabinets and find what you're looking for and save time. I mean, there's a cost to it, but it's going to do, do well for the community. I mean, you can find what you got rather than go buy it and then you open another cabinet, oh, there it is. Now we got four. So, uh, we discussed snow plowing procedures. Uh, we discussed the speed of the plows. The plow design is made to roll the snow, which is, it's a benefit, but it's a downfall. When you've got, uh, a light snow that's maybe crusty on top, as they come along and, and it rolls, it's just going to skate right across the top of that hardened snow. And it, there isn't a lot you can do about it. They, they can slow down, but some of the snow, I mean, even if you take a shovel and you throw, you put it on the snow and it just slides out. It's like, well, now imagine being in a truck. You're going to feel pretty bad that it happens, but you got a plow. We discussed ordinances pertaining to snow removal by residents at their homes and their businesses. The police checked out several complaints over the winter. We discussed with Scott that maybe we should put the shoveling ordinance on cable TV in the fall and put a reminder in the utility bills like November about the shoveling and the little, we put little blurbs of our actual ordinance in there so that they're, can see the verbiage to read it. So hopefully we can remember to do that in November. Then there was one, our last meeting before was September 30th, Public Works. And we had a citizen complaint of how come the end of Depot Street was opened up by the county? And so we were checking, Scott was checking into when and how and on that. And we never heard anything back till our February meeting. That was our next meeting. So, um, around 2010, 2011, the road was opened up after the fuel of Depot was put in by the county. And that was the information we got back. There was, uh, emails that were sent back and forth from the county and city back and forth over that time period, you know, during those years. And we, we want to, I mean, the county and city work real well together hand in hand, such as, uh, West Street project. You know, we're going to help out and they'll help... such as West Street project, you know, we're going to help out and they'll help us with other projects that they, when our salt truck broke down, the county loaned us a salt truck to salt the city roads until ours was fixed again. So, we want to be the good neighbor as well as they to us and work hand in hand, so. Then the other one was the cooler at the community center, which we already discussed, so, that was our meeting.
Any questions for Dave?
Dave, the, the citizen complaint, they don't want that open at Depot Street, is that the complaint there? Like, why did this get open? I mean, it's been open for how many years, and this is the first time we've had a complaint about it, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it was a cul-de-sac and now it's, it's open, and how and when that happened, so we couldn't find exact details of, you know, like paperwork saying it can be done, you know.
Are they concerned because of the traffic, the amount of traffic, and is it just county traffic, or is it just Joe Public Citizen that's going through there and then using the road up to the, up through the, by the?
Well, if you do use that road up to Home Road, you are subject to, a county official or a cop could pull you over because it, it's clearly marked, it's a private access road.
Correct, and that's why I'm asking, is that, is it based upon just county traffic that's coming in?
Right, it's the county traffic coming on and off, onto that both ways.
Yeah. They tend to take the south route more than the north route, I guess, like, depends upon where they're going to or where they're patrolling, but I think the thing is, the people were living on a street with a cul-de-sac at the end of it, and then the county tied on an inlet for the fuel station onto that cul-de-sac, then in later years continued a road up to Home Road off that cul-de-sac. So, it's really not a cul-de-sac anymore, it's pretty much, but the only people that are supposed to be using that road up to Home Road are, are, are county officials or county employees, clearly marked that way. Jim Milky did approach me at one time before this all started with West Street, about us taking over that street and then they would take West Street, and I said, well, I says, we've got access to private properties that we didn't want to get into that. The end of West Street has some rear access to the properties that are on South Main Street, and we didn't want, I, I told him, I said, that wouldn't work. So, anyway, that's the long and the short of it, I think they just kind of feel that the county kind of abused their power and, and opened up a couple inlets onto the cul-de-sac, not making it a cul-de-sac anymore. Naturally, the traffic does speed by there during certain times of day when patrolmen are, essentially, police officers are feeling up and they get a call, and then they'll kind of race down that street, and I think that's probably where the big concern is. I think all other traffic, I think, drives a reasonable speed through there, and I don't even think, John, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think their buses and stuff for the county assistance generally go up the home road.
They go the other way, I think it's mostly squad cars, I think.
Yeah, mostly squads, so. Explain it all, Dave, I think you gotta go.
You, you did real well. Much better than I.
No.
Dave, the other thing for your Public Works Committee and the outdoor dining, when I served on Public Safety, we did a huge amount of work on outdoor dining, so you might want to go back to records. Sean, I don't know what you have, but I believe there was an ordinance and a diagram and outside, and there was a lot of work, a lot of meetings that were put into that, so some of your legwork may already have been completed for you.
Wonderful.
At, at that same time, Cheryl Mayville was one of them, and that's one of them that they're kind of modeling the new one, I guess, so.
And I think, I think a lot of it has been done already. I, I really believe it has been, so.
Good.
Search, search the history.
Thank you.
So it was not for naught. Thank you.
Anything else from Public Works?
Nope.
Moving on, Cable TV.
No meeting and no, no report.
CDA, we didn't have a meeting, we are going to have a meeting next Tuesday night, all plant commission members are invited to attend, we're going to schedule a tour of Autopet care products, so we're going to meet down there, we'll call the meeting to order, and then we'll tour the, tour the plant, and then reconvene back here at City Hall to discuss other business. We've got the builder that wants to address the group, and we also have Deb, last name?
Rhino.
Rhino, from Thrive Corporation, who's been working with Autopet for some state incentives and what have you. Sean and I did meet with her for about an hour with the plant engineer. Yeah, like Sean said, they're looking to add one hundred and fifty jobs in the next two to three years, they're looking at a eight to nine million dollar expansion over what they've got presently down there, so, I don't know, there can be the best thing that ever happened to Juno, I guess, so.
What evening? What evening?
Oh, yes, by all means, it'll be Tuesday evening, six-thirty down at City Hall, or down at City Hall, down at Autopet, you're all welcome, by all means, if you're interested in taking a tour.
Next Tuesday, anyone pick me up? Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, that's our CDA night, so we'll certainly welcome anybody, you know, from the council here.
Uh-huh.
Have to do it safely, we have to wear masks and what have you, but I already made arrangements with the manager down there, with the plant manager, to walk us through, and you can see what they, they all do down there, you know, he'll put a nice presentation together.
Yes.
The CDA members will be the only members that'll be paid for their scheduled meeting, but I do encourage all plant commission meetings because, members to attend that because we will be taking action on their end of it at the end of the month, so. Any questions on CDA? Don't have too much more to report, but I think, I think Sean will agree that we had a good productive meeting this morning, and Deb is very knowledgeable of what can be done for these people from state aides and what have you, so, it looks like, like we're on the right path, so.
Sitting.
Yep. Okay, Recreation Committee.
We did meet, we actually had a new board member for the first time there, that was really quite nice. The one nice thing about the rec board is they are very passionate. The downfall to that is you could take a small conversation that can linger on for about an hour. So we, we did have a very in-depth conversation about the rental fees for meetings, which is very good, the presentation of the packet that we had for the rates, it's going to go to finance, all we did was change a couple terminologies of practice rates from resident and local meetings or practice rates, and we basically just took out the word "practice rates" out of there because there are local teams that can come in and come use it, and we're not going to charge them, if they're Juno residents, so.
Pretty much the option.
Yeah, pretty much the option, kids, so. And then, we did approve the purchase of the Team Cylon software, that is going to allow us to take payments over the, a new website, where they can pay for different programs, our programs, basketball, things like that, they can actually pay for the rental, put deposits down, things like that, for the community center. We'll be able to tie that website in with a new city website as well, so it'll be easy to find. Scheduling for practices, all that kind of stuff's all going to be built in, so coaches will be able to see it, so that'll be quite nice. And then the other thing, and I think this was kind of tied in with the library a little bit, but we're having Seamus go forward and apply for a bingo license. Seamus has been very adamant to try to get the elderly, the senior kind of group more involved, and do more things for them, to have more opportunity for them, so we're going to go forward and try bingo out. It's very minimal cost to, you know, get everything started up, the cards, the, you know, bingo machine, and then the, the license fee, and we figure we're going to try it for, you know, once, twice a month for a whole time, see how it goes, hopefully we get a nice crowd. We'll do it one day, you know, midday, and if it seems like the crowd's pretty good, maybe we'll do it, you know, one midday, one, one, you know, afternoon, one. So that's something that Seamus is working out and getting ready for, so hopefully we'll have more info at this month's rec meeting. And then also, Seamus has been very diligent about looking for grants, so right now, he's working on a Watertown grant, that could be up to one hundred thousand dollars, matching money, so if we're able to go forward and get that, then he's going to be starting a campaign to raise money for a splash pad for the city. So, yeah, that was the meeting. Anything else you remembered there from that?
No, just like to report, though, those compassionate members ran a, how many team basketball, how many teams were on that?
Close to twenty.
I thought she said twenty, twenty-team tournament over the weekend, utilizing the community center and St. John's Gym, and it was the first annual Gail Amsler.
Oh.
Tournament, so, she was quite touched at, before the championship game, when they called her out on the floor, presented her with flowers, the whole nine yards, and it, it was very nice. And Jason White, the caterer, caterer, was elated at the amount of business that he did, he served many pizzas and stuff like that, then he said, but, he says, this is so little work and such a good way to, to turn some cash over, so he's assuring me that he'll do well as far as getting his debt paid off with the, with the city and what have you, but it was very well-run, very, and they had people from Nina, Arrowhead, and Lake Mills, and what have you, and all the teams were, they're a good bunch of little ballplayers, and they're, they're really working on building a program that's going to walk into our high school, and I think, make a, make an impact in the future. Our cameraman was down there watching the games, and, did you do some assisting with scorekeeping and stuff like that, or?
I kept book, both days.
Okay. So, yeah, they had a very nice turnout, I did the, take in the Sunday games and whatever, and watched the championship game. Juno got second place, they, they played a very competitive, I don't know, a division quite higher than what they were playing in.
Arrowhead.
Arrowhead, yeah, so, yeah, they did very well down there, and you would have swore we had a, a flea market or a, a good-sized wedding going on, first amount of cars that were parked down there and what have you, so, yeah, food and beverages were served, and Jason White, the caterer, was very happy, as well as Jason White, the, the coach and man, or orchestrator of this tournament, so, so we can only wish him to keep going with this kind of stuff, more so. Anything else?
Nothing else from our.
Okay, sounds good. Moving on, Utility Commission report. Richard?
The Utility Commission always has meetings.
So I put you on, Richard, why don't you get involved?
They worked in the packet though, were they, the minutes? I didn't see any utility minutes.
There, well, I don't know if there were or not, but you can always look them up on the city website.
Yeah, I know, but I just noticed there, there were no minutes from the packet, I just.
First night for, for the, the new accountant, taking minutes. That may have been the reason, I don't know.
Let, let me give you a synopsis of what happened.
Over you, Jack.
We actually had two meetings last month.
Oh.
Yeah, the first meeting, we met, the commission met at the wastewater treatment plant on February eighteenth, and we were there to hear about options for upgrades to the current facilities. Tim Gazner and reps from MSA gave us a tour of the plant and presented a couple of scenarios for consideration. The consensus of the commission was to have MSA develop the financial impact of the second option, which includes the addition of an oxidation ditch. It's a pretty big undertaking out there, so, there's a lot to consider. We're awaiting a report from MSA on this, on the financial impact. Our regular monthly meeting was on March first. Mike and Jason Lau of MSA briefed the commission on the Highland Street project, the recommendation, their, their recommendation is for replacement of the sanitary and storm sewers, water mains, and widening the street to thirty-six feet with new curb gutters and sidewalks. Nick Galman has some concerns about the lead times for getting materials to this project, it seems like lead times, of course, are affected by the COVID situation. He's also talking with AT&amp;T and Charter about moving their cables underground, and how they hang on the poles, I believe, down that street. Decisions will have to be made whether underground or above-ground electrical, electrical service will be installed. He also talked about routine street light maintenance is continuing throughout the city, along with fixing hotspots that were found during the thermal imaging testing. Tim reported that they battled freezing pipes during the February cold snap, the new SCADA computer has been ordered. He offered a draft of the new contract that Tom Unki is negotiating with Sensient, and he expressed concerns with some of the language, so there's still work continuing on that, but as the mayor always says, that's, that's something that has to be handled soon. And there was more discussion on if it is necessary to add fluoride to the city water. It is not required by the state, and some surrounding communities do not add it. There, and there, finally, there are currently three applicants for the Utility Commission's scholarship awards, and recipients will be chosen and made. So, that's.
Any questions?
I don't have to read the notes.
Good report.
No questions, but again, the comment, flushable wipes are not flushable.
Attaboy.
They just are.
Yeah, we did have, we did have trouble with that lift too, over the, in the coal spill there with the one that Cheryl's, well, they all, all our lifts are subject to problems, but that one in particular up on North Main Street, we did have a little bit of issue, but we got it going again, so, but that is.
Toilets closed, do not belong down the toilet, do not belong in the sewer.
For sure, so. And we are going to, you know, it's not a secret that our treatment plant is maxed out right now, it's fortunate, like Autopet's expansion does not, does not have any kind of treatment process that, that's going to add any load to our treatment plant other than human waste, that would be the only thing, and whatever, but we, if we want to market our industrial park, we're certainly going to have to do an upgrade in that treatment plant sooner or later, because we are running on a forty-year-old treatment plant, which was designed for a twenty-year lifespan, but fortunately, it was designed with all the bells and whistles and foresight at that time, that it can be expanded, we don't, we do not have to just scrap that plant and build new, but we're certainly going to have to find some avenues of finance to be able to fund a eleven-million-dollar treatment plant, so. It's a cost of doing business that's never profitable for any community, sewage treatment is, is, if you can break even, thank your lucky stars on sewage treatment, it's never a moneymaker for any community, so. So enough, enough said on that, any old business tonight? New business, we have approved provincial license for bartenders for Brian Londo, is there a motion to approve?
So much.
Motion by Shanks.
Second.
Second by Grattan, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried, and approve a regular bartender's license for Brian Londo to expire twenty twenty, expired June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
So long.
All right. Motion by Fuddy, second by Schuster, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. No other business, so entertain a motion, Richard?
Motion there.
Motion by Schuster, second by Shanks, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Posed, carried, this meeting is adjourned.